All right, we're gonna call the meeting order.
Oh, and then the other ones.
Ms. Bernstein?
Here.
Ms. Christian?
Here.
Mr. Glavinter?
Here.
Mr. Parcy?
Here.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Thank you. Um, okay, so when we start, um, just a few things so everyone knows. In the middle of the table is the owl, that is our microphone and camera for the livestream. Um, it's supposed to automatically move towards whoever's talking and get you on camera. Um, so if you start talking, please wait a second to see if it changes and gets you. I'm gonna try and call in people as we go along with questions so that we can have a little bit of order so that it doesn't keep spinning and getting a little, uh, discompopulated. Um, on the agenda, there's a few items that we're gonna move up to accommodate some of our guests. Um, item seven point one and eight point two, we're gonna move up after the public comments. Seven point one would be Bob Israel's presentation on the Climate Action Plan, and eight point two is gonna be the tour of the library so that Bob can, uh, join us.
Well, thank you.
So, thank you. Um, so one other housekeeping item before we start. Um, I would like to recognize a few of our library employees who have been recently honored. Um, Kate, as everyone here knows, but has just become public, has been honored by the Illinois Library Association as its 2021 recipient of the Illinois Library Association Library of the Year. So Kate, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Linda Vearing has been honored as the Marketing and Communications, um, Award winner. So she's a recipient to the 2021 Illinois Library Association Deborah Dali Prezier Marketing Award. So Linda, do you wanna?
Linda is not here tonight, but...
Right, so we wanna recognize Linda's accomplishment as well and say, Kate, Linda, we're proud of the work you've done and we hope you'll keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Um, does anybody, would anybody like to remove any items off the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Nope, not seen anybody. Uh, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I think you might be looking at the old annotated agenda.
I'm gonna change it.
I emailed it to you.
Well, that's probably the answer.
Sorry, Jay.
Uh, okay, so we're removing the approval of the agenda from the Consent Agenda for separate approval. That's what you have on there?
Mm-hmm.
Um, which agenda is that?
So, I wanna just read that.
Oh, God. We're gonna add the executive session at the end to the Consent Agenda. I got it. Um, so we're bending the agenda to add an executive session, executive session at the end.
True.
I'll make a motion to add the executive session at the end of the meeting. Anybody want a second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Uh, we need a voice vote, so Jennifer, if you wouldn't mind?
Oh, you can just say all in favor.
We have, uh, you talked about to amend it or to...
To amend it. We can now do voice votes again because we're in person.
Yeah, but I thought for the Consent Agenda because we have our funds in there. We need a voice vote or...
Are you, you're making the motion for the agenda approval?
Oh, I got it.
Sorry, Jay.
I don't know, but I think I'm looking at the correct notes, but I think there is a typo in then under approval of Consent Agenda, three point two through three point five. It says May, 2021.
I see June.
Is it the draft?
Do, should I have a more current one? This says July 15th. Do I have that?
Might, might, I don't know. I don't know.
Hmm, did we get a second on that? Yeah.
Was there a second one sent out? But I don't have either?
No, it's on the, if you could just go to the website, you can get the...
Okay, I'm doing it from my email. Okay.
Laura, I'll just, I can forward it to your email.
Oh, thanks.
If the agenda I'm looking at says June.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Jennifer, we'll do a voice vote. Is there approval of the motion to amend the agenda?
Yeah.
All right.
Aye. Aye. Oh, aye.
Any of both oppose? All right, motion passes. Um, so now we can move on, I think, to approve the Consent Agenda, Dave. Is that, okay. So now, as amended for the agenda, um, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
No, not amended, it's just presented.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
As presented.
I'll second.
All right, now we need the voice vote, Jennifer.
Ms. Bernstein?
Yes.
Ms. Christian?
Yes.
Mr. Glavinter?
Yes.
Mr. Parcy?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Um, next item is public comment. Uh, there are two members of the public. If you'd like to step up to the table so you can, you seen her. You wouldn't mind introducing yourself, please?
Um, yes, um, my name is Anna Fillmore. Um, and I am better known to the community as Ms. Anna. Um, on June 16th, I was fired from the Northbrook Public Library for unsatisfactory job performance after 13 years of excellent service and escorted out of the library staff door. Firing a longstanding staff with no severance would indicate that something extremely serious had happened, such as assault or theft. But this is certainly not the case. Yet, I actually don't know what the reason was. The reasons given were unsatisfactory job performance and disrespecting coworkers. But they don't hold up to the facts. As an examination of my annual reviews, a reading of the letters sent by my coworkers to the board, and a look at the number of programs I brought to the library and their popularity over the last 13 years will test too. I am proud of the work that I have done here, and I want the community to know that I loved and valued my job. I stand 100% behind my work. I also believe that I was a decent coworker and very much supported the work of the other staff. It has been my privilege to work with a talented group of people, both retired and current employees, and I have learned a lot from them. So I'd like to say goodbye to the Northbrook community. I've done the WePlay and the toddler storytimes at NPL for 13 years, and it has been such a pleasure. This is really a very special community. I always had the most amazing diverse mix of moms, dads, caregivers, aunts, uncles, grandmas, grandpas, and on two occasions, great-grandparents who brought their loved little ones to my storytimes. I love the diversity and I love the openness to community that everybody brought to those programs. It was an honor to witness and to be a part of such a devoted and healthy child rearing. I treasure this experience, the people I met, and the work that I did, and I hope that they all remember me fondly. I'm saddened that the library does not value this role I played in the extensive work I did. I'm also troubled that the sudden termination of valued employees appears to be a pattern at the library. I would like to add a little impact statement here. I'm the sole source of support for myself and a significant source of support for my two fledgling children. I pay college tuition, I provide a permanent home, and I provide insurance to both my children. Losing my income with no notice is a big deal. And if it hadn't been for America's Rescue Plan, the bill passed earlier this year, I would have lost insurance for myself and my two children with two weeks' notice, and it would have been put in an immediate crisis. If the library is going to continue to terminate employees for no reason, which is a legal right that the library has to do, I suggest that perhaps the board should consider severance packages. It is the decent thing to do and is largely what's done in the private sector. I would like to finish by thanking the board for your important service as a bridge between the community and the library, which we all need. I'm just gonna pass this. Yeah? You want a copy of it? It's a little different than the one I sent, and... Yeah, or not.
Thank you for taking the time to come and speak with us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing us to speak.
Is there any other public comment?
I'm here absorbing.
Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda as amended is, um, seven point one. So Bob, hopefully I have more upbeat notes.
I, I hope it's a more upbeat note. Uh, thank you guys for letting me come in and speak. If it's okay, I'll, I guess I'll stand up here. Um, I, I really appreciate the function that the library provides within the community and, uh, know that you guys have a level of influence that extends throughout the community. Um, I also know that the, the library, uh, you know, the topic we're gonna talk about is our Climate Action Plan. Uh, and the library as a whole, I believe, uh, the functional library, values recycling by its very nature and sharing of resources that are valuable to us. So I think this is, you know, an ideal forum for talking about that. Uh, I also think that, you know, long before there was Google, there was the Library Information Desk. And so, you know, this is the ideal place to disseminate information to the larger community. Um, under other circumstances, Tessa Murray, our Sustainability Coordinator, would be here. Uh, so I'll apologize in advance for my shortfalls. Um, she has taken over this, the coordination of our sustainability efforts throughout the village and will be helping us, uh, actually implement this plan that we have come up with. We're here tonight, uh, why do we need a Climate Action Plan? Let me, I guess, start with that. Is everybody aware that the climate is changing? There are wildfires in, uh, in the great northwest. The temperature is over 135. Uh, there are floods in Germany today. Uh, you know, we're going through a lot of climate change. And so, we, we need, uh, climate change and we need an action plan here uh, because the things that we do impact the rate of climate change throughout. And the thing is that we can't do this alone. Uh, we need everybody along with us. So our, our, our goal here, well, what we're addressing here is if we do nothing, uh, we're looking at four degrees, four to six degrees hotter here. We're looking at 20 to 25 more hotter days, uh, over 90 degrees, 70% more, uh, 14% more rainfall. Uh, you know, there, there are a lot of impacts that, uh, happen with climate change as on the course we're going. Now, in order to address this, the village put together, uh, a team from the community. Over 30 people participated, including Jill Franklin from the library. So I'm grateful for her participation and her input, uh, throughout all this and grateful that she was able to access a lot of the information from the library. Uh, we have had monthly meetings. We've gone through, uh, 21 hours of meetings just of the group and then many other separate meetings with other interested parties, with, uh, with Commonwealth Edison, with solar providers, with a number of other people. So it, it's a widespread and widely interested group, not just, uh, you know, climate go-getters. Uh, you know, I wanna note that there were folks here from the business community represented as well, uh, who participated and brought some really good ideas to the table. So the, our goal here, well, the plan, the plan is to set a goal and to set some actions behind it in order to achieve that goal. And what we're trying to do here is mimic the Paris Accords that were, uh, put into place a while ago that we dropped out of, uh, for a little while, and now we're back being a part of it. But our goal is by 2030 to reduce our climate, our carbon output uh, by 35% below what our 2010 output, which is the last measurement, uh, was. And ultimately, by 2050, uh, reducing it to 80% below that. I don't know if any of you are aware, but I, I'm sure many of you are aware, um, that the EU is working right now on, uh, setting out goals. By the end of 2030, there will be no more internal combustion engines, uh, in Europe. I mean, this is, this is, people are taking this very, very seriously. So we're trying to, uh, encourage changes in behavior and generate resilience in the community. Now, the Climate Action Plan, I'm not sure, has anybody gone on the website? Thank you, Kate. Uh, the, the Climate Action Plan is about 130 pages itself. It will have appendices and resource material that's associated with it. But it actually, it tries to boil things down in eight sectors. And I'm not gonna take too many deep dives in that. You actually have, uh, the summary boards for each sector are up there, um, if you, if you care to go into it in a little more detail. But what it does is for each of those sectors, it develops strategies and then actions to address those strategies uh, in order to be able to quantify the reduction in sea and carbon emissions. So the, this is put together with a mathematical model in order to make sure that that 35% and then that 80% actually is a real achievable number, assuming that we do the things that we're planning. So, you know, we're, we're gonna be looking at many of these things. There are, I believe, 180 or 190 actions within the plan. Uh, things that are from encouraging solar power on roofs uh, to reduction of gasoline engines for leaf blowers. Uh, it's, it's a wide variety of different things to do that people practically can do. Now, the village is going to do that within the village, but it doesn't end there. Our, our impact over village facilities is relatively small with respect to the larger community. So we need help from, uh, the village's commissions. We need help from the Park District. We need help from you guys. We need help from the community as a whole. So we're looking for advocates and partners in order to make sure that this moves forward. So what we've done is we've identified some areas where we think the library is particularly poised to help the village achieve these goals. So mostly, like I said, the library is a source of education. Uh, it, it is a source of information. It, it's a source of motivation for our young folks who come here every day and who spend a lot of time. If you talk to them, they can talk to their parents. That's the biggest capture that we can actually hope for is when, when the children say, "Dad, I don't want you to drive me to school every day. I can walk the three blocks." So, you know, we are looking for, uh, the library, and I believe that there is already some plans on the table for some, or even, uh, participation to help us get word out, uh, and information about transportation and land use, which is a, a sector. Obviously, you guys aren't gonna be involved in land use, um, but if you would help us get out information about alternative forms of transportation. Use those bike racks, kids. You know, we don't have to drive here all the time, walk here. It's a great idea. So those kinds of things in the larger community, make sure they're aware of the metro station. Things like that. Uh, Buildings and Energy, this is, this is huge. Um, and I think you guys have started to incorporate things like lighting lights, uh, computer-controlled climates, uh, climate control. Um, but, you know, is everybody in this room aware that ComEd and iGas actually have a free, uh, a free program where you can have somebody come in or get somebody on your phone, and they'll do a walk-through of your house with you? And they'll tell you, give you suggestions on upgrades that you can do, small upgrades, weather stripping, uh, use of your thermostat properly, uh, LED lighting. And then I'll actually send you a gift box of all these things. Just recently, I spent, uh, actually back in March, I spent about 40 minutes on the phone from Jason at Commonwealth Edison. And, you know, I'm a nut about this. And my house is pretty, you know, I've got the computer-controlled thermostat, web, everything's on the web, uh, high efficiency, everything. He and I went through and he still found some things, and he still sent me a gift box at the end. It was wonderful. It was really a worthwhile, uh, you know, kind of, uh, just walk-through of the house. Waste Management. Uh, we are trying to get a grasp on, uh, our recycling rates. Uh, we're getting more information from, uh, Waste Management, Previously Advanced Disposal. Uh, and we're trying to educate the community on how to properly recycle so not as much of the stuff that you put into your recycling bin ends up in the general trash because it's been contaminated, because, uh, it's not an acceptable recyclable material and has contaminated other stuff that would normally be an acceptable recyclable material. So, you know, we're trying to do that. We're also trying to educate people. Our, our stickers this year say, "Say no to plastic." Doesn't mean that, you know, we're supposed to refuse it at all times, but we're supposed to be conscious about it and reduce it, minimize our packaging. Take one bag, take, take a reusable library bag. I think we've, we've got reusable library bags, Park District bags, the Village of Northbrook has bags. You know, bring those along with you and don't use the single-use plastics because those, we can't get rid of those anymore. Water and wastewater, um, we're trying to, we've, we've got a new, uh, or we've renewed our demonstration garden that's in back of Village Hall. Uh, we are trying to, you know, tell people or help people better use their water. Instead of going out watering an enormous lawn, you know, maybe use natural grasses, maybe use something that's a little bit different and, and get a better result and not have to water that much. We have, we're lucky in that we have a direct source from Lake Michigan to get our water here. Not everybody's so lucky, and we don't take it for granted. Uh, Local Food and Agriculture, you know, advertise, if you could advertise, uh, the Farmer's Market, uh, use of local foods, locally available foods. Uh, that would be, you know, very helpful. Uh, Health and Safety. Uh, just recently, I know that, uh, I borrowed on my iPad the Bill Gates book, How to Avoid a Climate Disaster. Uh, you know, disaster preparedness, people, it's not necessarily for those people who are stocking cans in their basement and waiting the end of the world. You know, there are going to be climate emergencies, flooding, heat waves. You know, educating people about things to do in order to help get through those times would be good. Um, one of my favorites, Green Space and Ecosystem Health. Um, I'm a butterfly guy and a bee guy, I guess. Uh, you know, it's, it's something that we should be helping along in the community. I don't know if you wanna put a beehive up on the roof or something. Um, but, uh, we need to make people aware of, as well as, you know, use our lands for something other than just grass in order to help biodiversity. So, Climate Economy. Uh, basically, Climate Action is one of the things I know that I'm pushing for. In Maine today, uh, there was a, today or yesterday, the governor signed into, um, into law an extended producer responsibility law having to do with plastics and, uh, having to do with, uh, packaging. So to try to reduce that. So, you know, there are things that we can do, as, as well as solar panels, that actually helps our economy by getting power locally. Uh, we have several solar providers within the community who get them, install them, and that actually works quite well. And I think that's, that's really it that I've got for you guys. I'm hoping you guys will accept the challenge and maybe expand on it and do good things.
Thank you, Bob. So, just so you know, last month Jill Franklin did present to the board, and she focused on details of the action plan and how it can impact the library. So it is an ongoing, um, process for the library that we're committed to, to implement it, not just to educate others, but also to take it into consideration in the way we manage the library and the processes and policies that we have in place.
Great. That's good news.
If you have a moment, I don't know if there are any questions from the board for Bob?
I don't have any questions, but I think you did a presentation.
My pleasure. Like I say, Tessa would do it much better, but...
Great job, thank you.
You did a good job.
And I would like just, um, I would like the library to do as much as we can in ongoing construction projects to make sure that we're recycling all construction debris, using recycled materials, using local materials when we can, et cetera, so that can be a sort of the forefront of the ongoing...
And, and Commonwealth Edison, uh, I've talked to them. They'll do an assessment on the library facility.
Already done.
Already done? Okay. You guys are ahead of me. I figured library...
But there's always more, like you said, there's always more.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unless there's more to discuss with Bob, the next item is to do the tour.
Yeah, so we're gonna, um, we're gonna pause the livestream as we walk around the building and we show you some of the construction areas and the upcoming construction areas. And then we will come back and, um, continue with the rest of the agenda.
So next item on the agenda is Kate's Staff Report and the Reopening Plan Update. Kate, take it away.
Okay, I did put this in my report, but just wanted to let everyone know I am gonna be on vacation from July 23rd to August 4th. Uh, my sister and I are driving with her three kids down to visit my aunt in Miami. I don't know if you can consider that a vacation, but I'm going to. And, um, so Kelly will be, um, here in my absence to handle anything that needs handling. Hopefully, that will be necessary. Um, I also wanted to just mention a couple things about the stats report. Now that we have gone a full year under the pandemic, um, we'll be starting to be able to see some trends and make some hypotheses about how things will change. Um, for instance, obviously, you know, circulation is going to, physical circulation is gonna continue increasing. What's been really interesting, though, is... What's been really interesting, though, is even as we've made the physical building and physical items more available, our ebook circulation has still increased year over year, even pre-pandemic times. So it'll be interesting to see whether that remains that way, or whether people go back to using physical books, or whether we see just an overall increase in circulation, which we'll be able to kind of look at over the next couple of months. And we also saw really, really high usage of our databases during the early days of the pandemic.
Tyler's coming.
Okay. But that will have, will help us kind of see what people were interested in, but we've also seen them now kind of drop back off. Those have gone back almost entirely to their pre-pandemic levels, which is really interesting. We also, of course, are starting to see visitors increasing and that allows us to see kind of what people's comfort levels are with things. But we're still seeing a really high curbside usage, whether or not that maintains. We think that it will. We think that people really like the convenience. And so we'll be kind of looking at all of these to see what exactly is going to happen. One thing that is, of course, not a great trend, which is that we do have fewer library card holders. We did extend library card expiration dates during the early days of the pandemic, but then once we reopen, we let people know that they could come in and renew. We're finding that a lot of people maybe aren't comfortable yet renewing. And so we are looking at that and we're going to be doing a big push in September for Library Card Sign-up Month to get those people back in and also, of course, to attract new users. So we, I anticipate in the next four to six months, we'll see those numbers return to their pre-pandemic numbers. So, so we're continuing to track all of this. I think it's interesting just to see how things are shifting and as we continue to reopen, which is going really well. I put a memo in, nothing big changing, you know, we're slowly ramping back up. And I'm happy to answer any questions on the reopening plan update or on my report.
Any questions? Can you hear me? Okay, so next item is the board member reports. First on that is ALA. If anyone had attended an ALA seminar or presentation or meeting during the recent ALA conference that would like to talk about it? So I didn't get a chance to attend. I don't know if anyone else was able to attend. I see a lot of shaking heads.
No.
Okay. So Kate was going to remind us that we can still go online, that there are recorded.
Yeah, I'll send out the links and login info again tomorrow.
Okay. On the revised agenda, I had an EDC meeting with Kate yesterday morning, so there is a bit to report from the EDC meeting. Okay, the village updates, a couple items here. The ordinance approving outdoor dining has been extended until April 2022, if anyone was wondering. So the restaurants that had been approved, and there were 15 of them, for outdoor dining, will be able to do so. Some are doing so at the same levels, some are doing so at reduced levels because of staffing. That was a big discussion, that there's a shortage of labor throughout the area. And a lot of restaurants and hospitality organizations are having trouble hiring staff. Even though they can now go back to full operations, they're not able to because of shortages of help to be able to bring up to that level. Heritage Oaks Golf Course is going to be opening in the next month. For those that don't know, Sportsman's Golf Course has been renamed. That is now Heritage Oaks Golf Course. Over the past year, that was renovated by the Park District. And in August, they are formally opening it completely. So if anybody is a golfer and wants to go over and see the new golf course, they'll do it in a month. In terms of some of the activity going on in the village for construction, all that kind of stuff, the only thing that we discussed is the Cadillac dealer on Spokey has submitted for a permit to improve the existing dealership. So the village is happy about that because that's a big source of revenue for sales tax. And they're happy to see that instead of trying to find a new place, they are expanding and improving the existing. Northbrook Court is appearing before the board next week with a status update. There really wasn't any insight as to what that might entail. And so they're waiting to find out what their plans are and what may progress in that. There was some discussion about whether or not it's for sale and/or, I guess it's not actively being marketed, but there was some valuation done by the lender. And so there's a perception that even though it may not be actively marketed, they may be open to a buyer. But there's hope that the current owner is continuing with all the development plans. To the knowledge of the board, or not the board, the village staff, they are. Granger is going to be marketed for sale. They're having RFP out for a brokerage firm or brokerage firms to submit, to be the brokerage of record. So Granger is not going to be developed by the village, it's going to be sold to someone who will develop it hopefully. There's a little bit of discussion about the 6B application that we discussed at the last meeting. So there was some revision to the application by the purchaser. Specifically, if you remember, they talked about having a $500,000 investment that will be put in initially. That's been revised to say it'll be initially upfront a $300,000 investment with the other $200,000 being invested over an extended period after it's purchased. Because of that change, the board was pausing and waiting for it to be resubmitted and then they're not going to send it back to us, but the board will then vote on it, I guess. After that, there was a long discussion about the purpose of the Economic Development Committee or Commission, whatever it is, post-pandemic. There's a lot of discussion about what kind of things that we can do in order to both educate the public about the importance of having various economic bases for the village, both retail, hospitality, restaurants, but also light industrial and commercial, in order to make sure everyone's aware how important that mixes to the health of the village. Although we know that there's a declining use for the industrial and commercial. By commercial, I mean like the commercial part, not the office buildings. There's also discussion about trying to have the EDC disseminate more information to the various taxing bodies and to have the taxing bodies kind of jointly be able to disseminate information of value to the public about economic development within the village so that there's kind of an overall marketing plan, so to speak, to keep the residents and constituents aware of the importance of the various economic issues. Then at the end, there was a report by the different taxing bodies. The school districts talked a lot about their new boards. There was discussion a little bit about the changes for the upcoming school year. And so the most of the discussion was around masking. The elementary school districts are going to be having some level of masking for those who are unvaccinated in terms of the kids. The middle schools, where you get into the ability that the kids be vaccinated, are going to have a little bit more of a typical issue because there will be some that are able to be unmasked, others that will have to be masked. So they're trying to figure out how to deal with all of that. They talked about the social distancing requirement being reduced from six feet to three feet, which allows most of the schools to increase class sizes and re-figure how they were having classes from last year. But all in all, they talked about going back to normal in-person classroom activity. They're expecting to figure out how enrollment will come in. They're still waiting for final enrollment, but most of the school districts talked about there being enrollment increasing. Some of that due to returning back to in-person over last year and other having to deal with, you know, the mass exodus from the city into the suburbs by young families. The Park District talked a little bit about activity, besides the redevelopment of Sportsman's now Heritage Oaks, the Fourth of July and how, well, a few activities it did have were attended. Tuesday in the park, they talked about being a large turnout on a regular basis. So I guess there's a Tuesday present, like a musical presentation in the park and they're, they've been overwhelmed, excited by the overwhelming participation and they've been happy about it. Obviously, the pool attendance has been good. And Kate talked about Barbara being our new board member. She talked a little bit about the reopening, the full capacity and full hours. She talked about the summer reading and then we were proud to again recognize Kate's honor so that the village is hearing about it from us. Glenbrook North, or the Glenbrooks, talked one issue for those who have kids still in Glenbrook North. Recall, two years ago it was, they redid the main gym and put in a whole new floor. At the end of June, there was a period where we had a lot of rain. And apparently during one of the rains, over a 15-minute period, the pipe system that took the water from the roof into the sewer line had a failure and the water was able to get into the new gymnasium and soaked the floor over the weekend. They didn't have the activities that weekend, so they did not realize until Monday that the failure had occurred. And by the time they got there, the floor was ruined. So that new floor has to be replaced and they're expecting it won't be finished again until winter. So anyone who has kids who are using the gymnasium floor, there's going to be a shortage of space available. Finally, the Chamber, Northbrook Chamber, they have a program that they do every year pre-pandemic, but didn't do it the past year, is having to do with leadership in Northbrook. If anyone is interested in doing it, it is a program that takes place over several months. They do a number of meetings where they go to different taxing bodies, different businesses and different other places within the village. So you learn a lot about the village, how the village operates, some of the physical works within the village and some of the businesses that are in the village. That's where the police and fire. So they are opening up that program for enrollment and I guess if you want the Chamber website.
I think, I'll send it. When Tensley, Tensley always sends the application to me because we put it out through the library. So I'll send it to everyone.
Oh, yeah.
I think she said end of the month.
Yeah, and it starts in September. That was EDC meeting. Do we have other board members, anything else they would like to present for this agenda? No? Okay, well, move on. Next is, on the unfinished business, the RFID and circulation innovation update. Kate, again.
You guys now saw the automated material handler in action, so it's pretty, pretty exciting. That was the last big-ticket item, along with the furniture, the staff lungs that we were waiting on. We do still have some minor punch list stuff that Anna is working on with our construction company and, but we can essentially consider this project complete. Once we are able to actually officially close out and close the books, we'll provide the board with a full financial breakdown. But until we have the punch list stuff done, we're holding money back because of course they need to finish that before we can give them their full payment. So that will be coming probably in the next couple of months, so this will no longer be an agenda item. That's it.
New business, 8.1 here, so the Illinois Library Present Joint Program Cooperative, is that what the?
I'm going to do a presentation, yeah. So, um. Okay. I have a password. Can you, Anna, can you go grab Tyler again?
Yeah.
I don't, no, he has it set up with a different login, but I don't know what the password is, okay?
Move on. If we're waiting, would this be a good time to celebrate?
Do you want to do it now or do you want to do it after we've?
Kate, would you mind if we did it now?
We're going to continue live streaming.
Yeah, should we wait till you're done live streaming, maybe?
Yeah, that's fine. Well, we're going to live stream throughout the whole meeting, right?
Yeah, are we do, okay.
Or I thought we could do it after we wrapped up.
Okay. After the executive session or before we go into executive session?
After or before, I'm not sure.
I don't want to forget.
It sounded like more after the meeting was completely done.
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Celebrating.
Yes.
Well, while I'm waiting for Tyler to come, I'll just, I'll give you guys some background, which is going to be like the second slide. So you may recall that last fall, we had Dr. Ibram Kendi, who we came, who we brought in to do his Zoom presentation. We had over 6,000 people attend and we partnered with almost a dozen other libraries to do this program. That went really well, was something that we would not normally have been able to afford him. And so since then, we've done some other joint cooperative programming. Last night, we had Casey McQuiston, who's the author of Red, White and Royal Blue.
He's coming.
And, and have done things like The Long Shadow, bringing in Harlan Coben this past March. And so all of these were new opportunities for us to partner with other area and not-so-close libraries to bring in interesting speakers, everything ranging from, you know, authors to topics on social justice and other topics of interest. Okay, great, here's Tyler. We'll just, I'm going to just pause there for a minute, Nikki. But you guys are now seeing this, that's not great. It's not letting me do this. We're going to just hide the presenter view. There goes. Okay. So, so we've, we've now done a bunch, a bunch of other libraries have also done a lot of joint programming. We did not take advantage of all of it. Some of it had a very quick turnaround and with our marketing cycle. But all of it presented us with a really great opportunity. And so we decided to form a committee. We, meaning me and some of, like Northbrook and some of the other libraries, got together and were like, how can we leverage this amazing opportunity longer and do more with it? So we formed a committee in March of this year and established what our mission and goals were going to be. And then had to talk about funding and governance and drafted a general timeline for what we wanted to look at in terms of actually doing this on a more official, long-term, regular basis. One of the big things that we really wanted to focus on was having a lot of representation in this throughout the state. So we did just start soliciting for some additional volunteers and we started talking about planning programming for 2022. That all seems really far away, but when you're coordinating with that many people. So our hope is that in January, we'll be able to launch what we are calling Illinois Libraries Present. And the, the mission is to offer cost-effective programming to library communities throughout Illinois that can leverage the collective power of Illinois libraries to make them affordable and bring in people that we wouldn't otherwise be able to bring. The plan is for this to be 100% virtual. There's no planning for any in-person. So basically, it is, costs are going to be the cost for the speaker plus the cost for the Zoom license. So we have a couple of goals that we set out so that we could show other libraries kind of what we were thinking. Because really, there's a lot of, there's a lot of possibilities. But we wanted to start by focusing on social justice, EDI issues, and also on high-profile events, high, you know, big-name authors. We also wanted, since we are planning to focus on EDI issues, to make sure that the cost was, the cost for this was equitable. So some libraries in Illinois have very, very small budgets. For instance, we have a member, a new library director at Directors University this year, and her total operating budget for the year is $16,000. So that includes staff, building, materials, programming, everything. So as you can see, knowing that our budget, you know, is in the millions, there's a wide variety. We wanted to be able to offer everyone at all different levels the opportunity to be able to participate in this and to put on quality programming like our patrons renew experience. So that, of course, leads us to governance. So how do you organize all of this? How do you charge people for this? How does all of that work? I've done a lot of research with a couple other committee members. Arielle is actually one of our committee members. So, um, she's been wonderfully helpful on the programming and organization side, as I'm sure you guys can imagine. So looking at the governance, we talked to the State Library. We talked to the library systems. And ideally, this would be a project that they would do. However, they do not have either the bandwidth or the funding to be able to take this on. Um, so talking with them, um, what we determined was, and we could create our own, like, 501(c)(3) to be able to offer this. That's a very time-intensive and expensive proposition. We don't know if this is going to be a long-term thing, or it'll maybe a couple of years and then kind of fizzle out if people get tired of Zoom. Uh, so we wanted to be able to launch things and move fairly quickly. So that is where you guys come in and where I'm talking to you. The hope is that we can launch this by doing an intergovernmental agreement. Um, what this does is it allows us to coordinate with other area libraries, well, throughout the state, um, to say that we're going to work cooperatively to plan and put on these programs, that everyone will have a cost based on, um, their operating size and how much they want to participate. The, the library system, so RALE has said that they can handle billing everyone and doing all of the financials. They just can't put it all together. So what, um, what we need is, we need one library to actually start the initial IGA so that others then can adopt it as well. And that is where we get into next steps. So what I'm hoping is that, um, we here at Northbrook and that the library board will agree to approve an intergovernmental agreement to allow this to form. In terms of cost for us, there really aren't. I mean, we will pay to be part of it just as a member, right? And we're looking at probably, um, a few hundred dollars a year, and then whatever the costs are for the programs. Um, and that would cover like the initial membership, like the Zoom license and marketing stuff. But what the IGA would allow would be for us all to connect and take advantage of the, um, Illinois Intergovernmental Agreement Act as well as the, um, Cooperative Purchasing Act. So if we did end up needing to purchase things beyond just speaker fees, we could look at purchasing those together for these types of programs and getting better deals. And gives us a formal framework to work within so that everyone knows what the expectations are and how they're going to be held accountable. So this is really, really high-level, just to introduce everyone to the concept. But the hope is that if there is, if it seems like this would be something the board would be amenable to, next month, I would actually bring back a draft IGA to talk over in more detail. So I'm going to go through that really quick. And I'm happy to answer any questions people have or go into more detail on any of the areas.
So is this happening right now? Is this something you're working on now? For, because I do think, like, I don't know.
Yeah. So we've been doing joint programming. We just haven't been doing it formally, and it's when, then it's just really small groups of libraries. So the goal is that we can leverage and have like 80 libraries partnering on a program. So yes, we are doing joint programming. We haven't done any programming through the Illinois Libraries Present. The goal for that is January. So, because we need to get the IGA in place, then we need to get it signed by all of the other libraries that want to join. Then we have to actually build people, um, for the membership fee. And then we have to, you know, market to our communities what events are going to be coming.
And who's spearheading this whole thing?
The local board.
But, but, I mean, to be fair, there was a lot of different people talking about it, and we all kind of converged. So we have people from Arlington, Skokie, um, Schaumburg, um, Westchester. And then the goal is to have about, um, 200 to 300 libraries be members, which, based on the interest surveys we've done, I think that that is probably low, but it's a good start.
This is, uh, a grassroots effort that's apart from, like, ILA, they're not involved at all?
ILA was not interested in, they feel that their efforts are better focused on advocacy, not on programming. They felt like this was outside the scope of their.
Okay. But they don't, I mean, they have no role, like, they're not endorsing it, they're not, you know, they're kind of.
Oh, they thought it was great. They haven't officially endorsed, I mean, there isn't anything to officially endorse yet because there isn't anything that officially exists at this point.
Yeah.
But they're, yeah, they think it's great. Anything that, um, you know, one of the main goals in the library statutes is resource sharing. And, and while we normally think of that in terms of borrowing material, this is absolutely another form of resource sharing and cost savings for our taxpayers because you can do more and make it more affordable, so.
Would this be, who would be? Would anyone be able to sort of virtually attend these events? Or would they have to be members of those specific libraries? Or if you lived in California, you'd be able to still do it, join it, right?
Yeah, the way that we're planning to do it right now, especially for the first year, because there's, you know, in order to be able to successfully evaluate this, we need to get some better numbers, right, than what we've gotten at the one-offs. And so the plan is, one of the things we would ask is, which library? Did you hear about this from? Which library are you a member of? And then be able to see, but we wouldn't limit it. And then if it became an issue where it was like, oh, 50% of people aren't from Illinois, then obviously, we would need to adjust. Like, one of the things that we've done here is we've done a lot of surveying to see in our in-person programs pre-COVID, like, how many non-residents are, how many non-Northbrook people are coming? It's generally like 5 to 10%. Um, so that, and you, and often we find anecdotally that it's like, oh, well, you know, I'm Debbie's friend from Glendale, so I came with her. You know, it isn't because they're just coming on their own. And some are Northbrook people. So the goal is to have as many libraries as possible so that it would be, you know, almost covering, hopefully, the entire state. So where, if they live in Illinois, chances are they're going to be offering this. And then, and then my hope is that eventually, this should become something that the systems offer, right? Like, this is, it makes sense. But we're just not there yet, and I don't want to, we don't want to lose the momentum to get this going. Because I think it's easier to hand off something that's like working. Like, here, you just have to keep it going versus starting. Like, if the boulder is already being pushed up the hill and is gaining momentum, it's easier than starting from the bottom where you don't have any.
It seems like a natural continuation of what we, you know, started to see in terms of programming from COVID. So I think that, you know, I'm in favor of giving you the authorization to move forward and.
Yeah, I think it also just makes amazing speakers that much more accessible.
Exactly.
And, so, from that standpoint, I'm happy.
And it will also, and this is something we haven't really focused on, I think, in some of our marketing efforts, that it's going to give us a chance to amplify some smaller speakers that might not otherwise be noticeable.
Yeah.
Right? Like, I was talking to a colleague today. She's good friends with Beth Moses, who I don't know if you guys are familiar, is the lead astronaut instructor for France's spaceship. She's up in space right now. She's a GBM grad and was, worked at NASA and is a literal rocket scientist. And I was like, we need to bring her in. And that's something that other people, other communities, I'm sure, would be really excited, right? To talk to someone, especially a woman, STEM, and, um, so, so, yeah, there's a lot of. So it sounds like it would be cool to bring the IGA back next month?
For sure.
Yes, for sure.
I'm seeing lots of nodding heads.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Great, so, Kate, I think that finishes up the new business.
I think you are correct.
So, um, can I have a motion to go into executive session, a closed session pursuant to five, ILS 120 slash two C1? The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity.
So moved. Did it all right?
Yes. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Okay, we are back in general session at nine thirty, I can't tell if that's right. Okay, nine thirty, nine PM. Next item on our agenda is agenda building. So with the next meeting, we will have additional information from Kate on the Illinois Library Present Joint Programming Cooperative Agreement. Uh, there may be some discussion about the Climate Action Plan and implementation. I will discuss the fall outside library visit. Barbara, that's where we, not in the past year, but in prior years, we go and visit another library.
Oh, that's great.
So it's a field trip.
That's fun.
And we usually would also follow up with some dinner to discuss what we learned.
Do we take a school bus?
Usually, we meet here or at the other library, and then we'll get a tour. And then we, that's there. And then we will also be discussing or reviewing the detailed statement of all receipts and expenditures for the prior six months that Anna normally puts out and will be approved. And that's everything. So I will adjourn the meeting. That'll be.